We get situated here.
Good morning, everyone.
Dried off.
Stand with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Agenda confirmation. Do we have any additions, subtractions, or corrections to the agenda? Did we get the EDA? It's still on our agenda. It was pulled from the online agenda, but it's still on ours, right? Okay.
Yeah, I'll provide an update in my report.
Okay. Do you want, Barry, do you want to look at that claim, or did you find it? I think it's on.
I want to make sure it's the correct one, but I'm, I want the Highway Administration.
I thought it was on.
Is it Kamco? K-A-M-C-O? What is that? Who's that bill for?
Swan's. What page is that on?
Page twenty.
I don't think I have anything that's me.
Page twenty, that's okay.
It's for one hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-four seventy-six.
Kamco Incorporated. I don't know. Should we pull that claim?
Richard or Phil, that's.
It's for the striping project.
What's that?
It's for the striping project.
Striping?
Okay.
Okay, then that's not the sidewalk.
I'm not sure who the contractor is.
The contractor's name.
It's not any of the other ones, though, that are on there currently, I don't believe.
I can, do you want me to send Jim a message and just ask who?
Well, ask whoever, Brian.
Oh, she already did.
That's, that's not the, if it's for striping, it's not the sidewalk.
No.
Right.
Angela said it was for the striping.
Okay. Thank you, Angela. Angela, could you, could you let us know what the name of the company is? That's just through text to Peggy, the sidewalks in Lake Park. Thank you.
All right, so we have no changes to the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So, motion by Phil, we have a second.
A second.
Second by Erica, I need more discussion. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, motion carries. All right, minutes from last meeting, August nineteenth, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I did not have anything.
I had none either. I know.
Mr. Chair, I don't. There was a, there was a space that was.
How did I not catch that?
I wanted to approve the minutes for last nineteen.
All right, so we have a motion by Phil to approve. We have a second.
A second.
Second by Erica, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, motion carries. All right, open forum. Do we have anybody on the open forum?
Mr. Chair, if it's for Fox Lake, they're on the agenda.
Is, are you guys, yes, so Stephen Corbin, are you speaking about the Fox Lake? So, you're on the agenda, so we'll get you when you're on the agenda, is that okay?
Okay.
And then Jerry Schramm. Same thing? Nope? Okay.
Well, let's hear it, Jerry.
Let's hear it, Jerry. You've got to come up to the mic.
Do you need some assistance?
Maybe Barry will give you his chair.
I would. If it's got wheels and a big motor, that'd help. Well.
So, Jerry, state your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Jerry Schramm, and I live in Erie Township. You approved the sale to the DNR for, for the Toad Hill. And dug on it, we've got just way too much public land. I know, I know if you wouldn't have done it, they would have rolled over us anyway, but I just want you to know, that's my feelings on it. Now, past that, good news, we have another Miss Minnesota, Emma Vries, from beautiful downtown Osage. And she follows, some time ago, we had Lori Sarnan from Snellman, and we had a couple from Detroit Lakes. I'm going to think if, if, if we go through that, we'll find that Becker County has had, had a lot of Miss Minnesotas. Probably a lot of them from over on the west side, too.
The, the, the current, the one that you mentioned, I can't remember her name, but she's Lake Park roots, you know.
Yes.
Jerry, Jerry and Jerry Janz.
Yeah, I go to church with.
Everything goes back to Lake Park.
Yep, they are. They grew up just out of town, down the north.
I go to church with her great-grandpa, so.
Yeah.
I was Elvin Anderson.
Yep.
Okay. Now, we've got all these pictures up here, and one day I noticed there's no Ponceford. Some of you may or may not know that one time Ponceford was a pretty, pretty going and growing city. And I would like your permission to put Ponceford up there as well. I'll get it blown up. Ponceford was right on Highway thirty-four. Thirty-four used to turn at thirty-seven, go up, and, and go through there. There was not Highway thirty-four through the Smokies.
Can we, can we look at it?
Yeah.
The picture?
Yes. Don't, we won't touch the. Yeah, just short to all of them. So, like all these little towns, it had the bank and the Creamery and, and, well, that's a nineteen, supposed to be a nineteen thirty picture, so it had, by that time, gas stations and all kinds of other things. So, it was quite a town at one time. And then rerouting a road that pretty much took care of its significance. Would that be okay with you?
I don't, you don't need our permission.
You don't need our permission.
I, I think we talked to Kerry and Building.
Yep.
But I certainly don't see any, we need, we'll need to match the framing.
Yeah, I was just looking. Oh, right above Mary, maybe, there's a spot, right?
Yeah.
Right above my head.
We just have to match the framing, I think it'll, it'll look good.
There's lots, it's the history of Becker County, there's lots of these small, small towns that started, and then all of a sudden, they vanish because the road changed or the population growth. Right on Big Corman Lake, there was a huge development on, well, it's, now it's county state eleven. On the east side of the road, there was a plotted town, already plotted there. And Marley Ristland had showed me the original plat, and it was, it was pretty amazing. It never happened, but.
And the name?
I don't remember that, if it had a name yet or not.
All right.
And I just want to say one more thing.
Yep.
Don't buy any more pickups. My gosh, you guys. I can, the brand I use, I've got two fifty, I've got one hundred, and I've got, the other one is just kissing three. These guys can make them longer than what they are now. Just my pet peeve.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Let's move on to reports and correspondence. Who would like to go first?
I can go first, because mine will be very short, because all I really have, I have just a couple. At a Mahoobee meeting last Friday, just so everybody knows, we are, they are currently ninety percent enrolled for Head Start for this fall. And they've also changed, submitted a change of scope for their Head Start program, and if granted, it will remove a couple of the family childcare providers in the Mahoobee area, and will replace them with an infant and toddler center. So, it, it's, the purpose is to meet that, that need for infant and toddler care in the area, and one will be, is proposed to be in Detroit Lakes here. So, that will be nice.
How many, how many kids, or?
I don't know, I don't know the number, but it's, I believe it's, they're going to have it over at DLCCC, where they have the current family care providers, and they'll switch to just infant and toddler. But I don't know the number of how many infant and toddlers will be able to be in each center. But, and then just an update on, I missed the EDA meeting, but I'm, I chatted with Cody Friday morning regarding the, we had approved the contractor for the Maple Avenue project, and they contacted Cody Friday morning and realized that they had forgot part of the project in their estimate. Well, that, it was, the whole project was within their estimate, but not in the dollar amount. So, they estimated it, they were about sixty to seventy thou, sixty to seventy thousand dollars short of their bid, so they have withdrawn. So, now we, that would, we would have to go back, all the other contractors had already been notified that they weren't awarded, so now we have to go back to the drawing board, republish the RFP, and start all over again, which means the project will likely not get done this year. So.
They were in low quote with that addition?
They were not, they, with that addition, it brought, no, no. They weren't.
And, Eric, weren't there some issues, too, with comparable materials and different things as well?
Yep.
So, it really isn't apples to apples.
Yep.
Well, it's tough on that type of job to get.
Right.
Get accurate stuff, but, I mean.
Unless you're going to get an architecture and.
I mean, even with a new construction, we, in, in the, was it the highway building or the jail? I can't remember. The roof was different linings and, say, or a different structure. But you both meet what you're looking for, but one that was better.
Mm-hmm. So, that was all I had.
I'll go. I had watershed. We've been talking about the Bucks Mills project for a long time. It was finally approved, done a lot of engineering, construction to begin, maybe some, some small stuff this, this fall yet, but the majority of the work will be done next year. Still working with, on an MOU with the watershed and the county. We're hoping to have that done by September tenth. Brian's been conferring with Lucas over at the watershed to make sure we have that MOU language appropriate. And they're doing it at the same time, they're doing it with the city, so want to make sure that we all kind of align on that. Airport, remember a couple months ago, we approved a couple projects, Taxi Line Rehab was one, it's basically a crack seal for the airport. That, they're going to have ten days to finish that. How it's going to do it, it should be done sometime here, I think their deadline is the end of September. The other project, the Apron Reconstruction Project, the grant money has been received, that will be done next summer, between May and September. Also doing some tree clearing.
When, Mr. Chair, with airport, then, with all this new construction that we've paid for, and all the, so many more planes and, and revenue coming in, I would imagine we're going to be looking at reducing our, our request to, they're, that they're going to reduce their request for appropriation from the county? So, we don't have to supplement them?
Are you asking me?
Yeah. I'm, I'm asking kind of, are we, are there, was their request the same or, or less than last year? Carrie, do you remember what?
It was the same.
Yeah.
Maybe we can look at, you know, starting to angle that off, being there's a for-profit business there, maybe there's a way to reduce that.
I can do that, and I will do that, start. I've asked for numbers about gas numbers, they can't really give me how many planes have come in, but depending on how much fuel they've sold, that kind of tells you that that is on the rise. I, I can ask that.
Well, and, and with all the revenue with the new, new.
Hangars?
Hangars out there, and, and the increased price of hangars, I, I just think it's something what we.
Our allocation of them is, was forty-five thousand dollars a year, or, yeah, forty-five thousand dollars in a year, so.
And how, for how long was that?
Well, there was no, there's no deadline on it.
I'm wondering, do other, do other counties give the air, the airport, have to.
I don't know.
We should look into the other counties. I don't know that we've ever looked at, like Menomon County has an airport, and I'm sure there's many counties that don't have airports. Yeah, there's one in Moorhead, southeast of Moorhead.
I can find that, I can find that out.
Carrie can look at what other counties.
Yeah, I have a, I can ask the county administrators in the, in the state, just the question in general.
Interesting, Barry, so I'm, I'm working on Floyd Lake, and a Learjet comes by, going to go into the airport, and this guy goes on his phone, it's an app, tells you what the plane is, where it came from, and who owns it.
Oh, interesting.
And it showed the trail back to Colorado, where it came from, and I'm like.
I've heard, I've heard that, that's available.
It was just strange. I couldn't believe it worked that fast, too, but interesting.
I suppose they're very regulated in knowing who's coming in and where they're coming from, and.
Bigger plane, smaller ones, I'm sure aren't.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, maybe a little plane, you wouldn't know that, probably.
Probably not a local flyer own.
Mr. Chair, yeah, give me some time, I'll inquire. I'm trying to find out all that information anyway, so.
We'll probably review it and get budget, I, I'd like a budget, I'd like another, another budget meeting before we do finals.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I think there's some things that we need to look at. I think we need to look at reducing our levy, so.
The other thing we did was, I'll work on that, Barry, and Carrie will, too, get some surrounding. Tree clearing, they're doing some tree clearing along the fences, just so that doesn't wreck those nice fences they have up around the airport. Reached out to Jim Olson, Eddie Clem on my own, and just was inquiring about wetlands credits. If you're not confused enough about your most confusing thing on this commissioner board, go ask Ed Clem about wetland credits. My God, that is just incredibly complicated.
Federal or state?
State. Would like to bank some just for future, just, just to have them, and just incredibly expensive, and the hoops you've got to jump through are incredible.
We don't want to, we don't want to bank them, because they're paid for, if it's a road project, they're paid for by the state. And there's state, there's state pools of those. We do have a federal, we do have some federal credit.
Our wetlands bank is pretty much empty, there's a couple credits left. We'll use them on the airport, which got me thinking about this, how we could replenish them, but.
Well, we sold them to the airport.
Correct.
County made a lot of money. So, most, most counties do not have an air, a wetland bank. We do not need a wetland bank, because road projects are paid for by the state, by the state.
We, we didn't make a lot of money, we had an asset that we gave up.
We made a lot of money.
We used a resource we had to extend the airport. I don't, I don't know how you can say we made money.
We sold wetland credits to the airport.
Correct. Therefore, we don't have anymore.
We, and we hadn't used them for many, many years.
Right, correct, nineties, yep.
So.
Anyway, I just wanted to learn about them a little bit, and, and I did, and I, you know, I don't want to get into an argument about.
I've had wetland credits, so I'm very familiar with them.
Okay. So, I did that wetland credit thing, and then on the twenty-sixth, went out and looked at the forestry trails with Jonah and Mitch. This gets into a weird area, because I'm not on NRM, but I'm on the RAC committee, so I don't want to step on NRM's toes here, but, you know, I just, I think we've got to take care of these forestry trails. I, I don't know what this means, maybe it's a work session. I think we've got to re, relook at our organizational chart, what that looks like. Just, and I think we need to fund, we need to put some money into our forestry trails. The foresters come in there, they leave, the trails get all grown in, and twenty years later, when they come back to reforest or something, it just, the, the trails are just a mess. I don't know what that looks like, but I'd like to have a bigger conversation on that someday, how to fund it, and actually look at our organizational chart.
Well, Barry, aren't we do, we're doing them, we're putting money into them.
There's, there's, there's some maintenance. I think, I think maybe what Phil's kind of referring to is, we should probably have, we should probably have a chart that says which trails are going to be annually maintained. I mean, we don't, we're not going to go and clean every trail every year, but there should be a.
It'd be like the five-year road plan with Highway.
You'd kind of look at.
Something like that, but we've got to fund it.
These trails are main trails that should be annual maintenance or brushing back to make sure they're staying open, and these are secondary, that you go back every five years, and these are, these are men, no, no improvement trailers. I mean, I, I think you identify those and can have.
But we're having trouble spending that money. Remember, we couldn't get people to do it last year. I mean, we, there was a couple contractors.
Well, I think you can get them to do it, but I don't know if you can afford to do it that in, and I think what, what Mitch is looking at, and Steve are looking at purchasing some of their own equipment, so we can do it ourselves, because you, it is difficult to find someone to do brushing and side brushing on, on some of these trails, because that's, everyone's busy at that time, you know, when you can do it. There is, I think they were talking with Highway to see if there was, you know, in any of those times when it, in, you know, late fall, if it happens to be not a lot of snow or something, but, I mean, I don't know what that would, if that's possible, or, but there are some discussions on that, but.
Yeah, I think maybe the thing is to have our own.
You know, some, maybe we look at it, maybe when we do a road tour this fall, we go looking at some of these, well, we certainly won't go drive through someone with the bus, we'll take Jerry's car.
Jerry's car.
When you go on that road trip, sneak across Point Thirteen, go up Clearwater Trail, go up Menomon, the two poor counties in Minnesota, go up their trails and see how they take care of them, and then they'll say, dude, you'd be just ashamed of the shape our trail, Barry, and thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I think Jerry had something to say.
Yeah.
Once again, I, I really believe this is a work session on a lot of different levels. If, if you guys don't, then we won't, but this is going to keep rearing its head. We've got Boyd out there redoing a road right now, and he, he looks like he's doing a good job, but I, I think to bring Mitch in, and, I don't know, I, I went out and looked at some of the trails, not all of them, I just, I think it's a work session, I really do, with some of the things that you guys just brought up.
And that, that, I don't have a problem doing a little work session and bringing Highway in, and seeing what their capacities are, and if, if they do maintenance on them.
They're aware.
I mean, so.
Yep. Had the Prairie Lakes meeting, the incinerator had a pinhole in the, in the burner down there, so they had to shut it down for a couple days. Had a bigger discussion on just sending drier garbage over there, so we can, we can do a better job of burning. Obviously, drier garbage burns better than the wet stuff. We, the incinerator is scheduled, or can supposedly do sixty-two thousand ton, we've never done sixty-two thousand ton a year, we've been at fifty-five. This year, we're only going to do fifty-two, so we're trying to get drier garbage over there, and also these compactor trucks, these ones, these new ones are coming out with augers. It grinds up the material, and you, we have to send the material through the MRF, the recycling facility, before we burn it. It's part of the contract to get all the money to do that. We have to send it through the MRF. There's nothing, it's ground up, it's like hamburger going through there. You can't, you can't do it. So, we've got some issues we've got to get ahead of over there, and these guys have spent half a million dollars on these auger trucks, so that it compacts it, it carries more, so, or they can carry more tonnage, so some issues there.
And for as far as wet garbage, do you know where that, where that's coming, or where the source of that worst stuff is?
All of the, when it rains, it's wetter. The summer's been wet, there's been a lot of garbage coming in.
Right, but is there some places that are storing their garbage outside and then delivering it, or, or is it mostly?
Well, and we've talked with that, ours aren't, we're trying to get them inside.
That's kind of where I'm.
It's the compactor trucks that go out and collect and, and direct haul for us, and the problem is that, you know, a lot of times, there's, there's holes in the bottom, so the, the water leaks, they can't do that. So, you're delivering garbage, let's say, let's say you leave a truck out, you're delivering garbage, it rains over the weekend, you're, when you get on that scale, you're paying for that water that's as tonnage to your county, then you dump it on the floor, and the water makes everything wet. So, it's just, it's some things we're just trying to, trying to work through and figure out.
And this organics program, no, it will help us with that.
Take some of that out.
To get some of that out of there also.
Yep.
But.
So, there's a couple issues. That, that compactor truck is a big issue to, to, to get drier garbage and to get garbage that isn't mutilated by the time it gets there. We had planning and zoning, Eric and I did, we talked about retaining walls, lots of people interjected about that. Not on the agenda today, but we'll need to talk about that a little bit, some more. Environmental, the new compactor truck we approved is up, and we've already, it was, we've got it already, and it's out working. October rollout of a e-waste dropout, this is something I kind of came up with, it's on the agenda, we'll talk about it a little later. We're still kind of rolling out the organics. This is the slowest rollout of organics I've ever seen, but it, it's happening, it's just taking a lot longer than we expected. Richard and I, we talked about in environmental, talked about an expansion of our facility, solid waste facility up there, just to improve it and expand it. We talked about how we can be ready for that, if we do get a grant for it. We talked about the ICWIC staffing up there for the MRF, had a long discussion about that, and those were my meetings.
We had benefits committee, and that's on the agenda before us, so I won't go into that, but it was some, some positive news on where we're, where we're at with, with our health insurance. Dave and I also had courthouse committee, didn't we?
Yep.
First thing was on our agenda was the UKG discussion, that's payroll and human service, human resource. There's some issues, there's been ongoing issues, and to change would not cost us any, would actually, I think, be a little bit cheaper. But the problem is that it's difficult for people to change that whole system in any timely manner, and it's a lot of new learning curves, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of negative to change, but then what would the positive upside? The product might be better once you get through it, so that discussion is ongoing.
And then one of the issues, if we do change, we have, we have to have access to year-end data, so that we can do our taxes, basically, audits, yeah, so, yeah.
We talked about some, some CRP and AED training. Richard's going to be the lead dummy on that.
CPR.
CPR, or, C, CRP.
It's like CPR.
CRP and CPR.
You've got your farmer hat on.
I, yeah, changed my, so anyway, Richard is, he practiced it all day yesterday, I think, being the, went through a couple of the career ladders and policies. We will be implementing our new email addresses. All, we're required to go to the dot gov, so we'll all get new email addresses.
And Judy's already changed some of them.
And some of them have been changing. And then I think the final thing was, we're looking at the air conditioning, how to keep the servers cool. The, there's a, if we do an alarm system, because now twice we've had that air conditioner unit fail, and it, it takes out all computer use in the county for, until you get that fixed, and Judy threw some numbers out, saying if it, if you lose X amount hours, that X amount of dollars, this will be paid for. So, adding another unit, I think she was talking about eight or nine thousand, or an alarm system. Alarm was five hundred dollars, and then about a monthly fee.
Forty-six, forty-six dollar monthly fee.
And we were wondering, oh, if you'd.
We could just get an.
So, we're going to bring in Brent for some discussions on that. That room heats up in the middle of winter. I mean, it's not a, so it's, so it's not fun. Also had Lakeland Mental Health, and with, there's, there's some revenue, we broke even, but there's revenue concerns. Of course, the state has, or state and federal have reduced some payments with Medicare, Medicaid, for them also, so they're, they're going through that. But the big, big one is the Alexandria office, and they have some serious road construction now. Now, it's getting towards the end of it, but they've, but they have been down in revenue in, in the red for, for quite some time, and if, we're looking at how that's going to respond now when the road's done, if that, you know, we're, look, being very carefully, but we're very cautious in how we're, you know, because that's an industry where you can, you can lose a lot of money very quickly, so. What else? I think that was Lakeland Mental Health. I think that's it.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, those email addresses, are, are we going to roll that out as you ask to update yours? Are we going to do it as a countywide thing, or? Kerry, did you have a...
She's doing depart, by department.
By department, Judy.
The rollout of the email addresses, are we, how, how are we doing that? And when are we going to do it?
It's, it's starting, and what I recall Judy saying was it was going to be by departments.
And, and so also too...
They were doing some test ones, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
And I think one of, like, my email was one of the test ones.
So we'll all be updated as to when you think, okay.
And you, and you will still have access to your old email.
There'll be a tab, like, attached to it.
For quite a while, yeah. It'll be attached to it, so. And if just people send it to the wrong email, or to the old email, you'll still get it for a period of time.
All right, all right, thank you.
This is the second email change since I've...
Really?
Well, I mean, when I was a Becker County employee, it was your first initial, middle initial, and then the first five letters of your last name, and then it changed to first name.
They never change mine.
I don't know why they did.
Mr. Chair, what, what was the impetus for this move? What, what, was this on choice or by who?
It's required.
This is, I, I don't know.
.gov is required by state, I think.
Is it the state requiring us to have the .gov?
They want all state, they want to be all state emails.
Okay.
Well, state emails aren't .gov.
Somebody required it.
Somebody is, yeah.
I had EDA, and just to say, it's really sad about those bids on Maple Avenue, because we've been trying for so long.
And it's so needed.
Yes, and it's, so that's very disappointing, but, so I don't have anything to add other than that. And then I had environmental with Phil, and I was just thinking that if we could get, you know, so all those garbage trailers have tarps that let water in, they're like a screen, and so I don't know what we would do, I hate to replace all the tarps on everything, but it'd, it'd be nice to...
To get it drier, you mean?
Yeah, or try and get them in under somewhere, you know, maybe a carport or something, but everything costs money, so.
Now, Mr. Chair, you know, keeping them in, we had talked about, I mean, we don't want those trucks in, and that, that, we don't want that spontaneous combustion of garbage if it's in over a weekend. The tarps, yeah, we, we talked about posp, and I think John up there and Steve, I think they can, they can, they can send drier garbage, because it costs us more. We're paying for the weight of the water when we deliver it over there, so, they're working on it. There's just little things that we're working on, and I, I think we can overcome it. I want to make sure all the other counties are delivering drier garbage too. I mean, that's...
Is, is like, for my garbage, or is, are they part of the problem too? I mean, I had, my covers were on last night, but a reminder to keep it covered too.
We talked about that. A lot of it's coming from the dumpsters to...
I have a dumpster.
Yeah, a lot of it's coming from that. I, I suggested maybe, you know, at grain elevators, you do a premium or discount for the, for the grain you bring in, you get a premium or discount. I, I suggested that, you know, if they're bringing in wet loads, they should be paying more for it.
You had to bring up the markets, didn't you? Did you see the markets are down today? It's not good.
I didn't, but anyway, that, that was kind of shot down, but we might be working on that. We need to get drier garbage, we're trying to find ways to do it.
I don't have anything else.
Okay. I had, I had courthouse, Barry, we covered that, and then I also had a DAC meeting. So normally, when we have a DAC meeting, we either go at noon, or we go at the end of the day, so we don't get to see how the clients are leave, and it's a process. So we had our meeting at two, I think it was at two o'clock in our last meeting, and the clients leave at about 2:30, 2:30, quarter to 3. It's, it's a big, there's, there's quite a few of them there, so it's a big process and how they, how they get them to leave. They leave, they, they have them in groups, and then they leave in, in their groups of three, four, two, one, some number one, it just depends on how, where they, some of them ride, some of them ride the bus, some of them are picked up, some of them are, but they have a scheduled time. So it's actually, it actually runs really smoothly, really well, and then, of course, then they're all sitting there with all the staff, and so then they have their banter time, so it's really, it's really kind of cool. It's really, it was, it was interesting. I'd never seen, seen that before. The, the grant that we, for the swings that we've supported, they got it. So, the grant they requested was for 35,000, and they got 42,000, so that's not normally happened, so you get more than you request. Anyway, so that, that project is going to be on the north, east, east portion of the property, not too far from the current building, and it's, they're going to, it's going to be really cool. There's going to be a whole area, it'll be, it's going to be an awesome thing, so that's really a, a good thing to happen. Then the last thing that we looked at, we have a lot of ceiling tiles in the DAC that are old. So we, we're looking at replacing probably, probably, I would say, all of them. There's a couple areas where they're not too bad, that have been, that had been replaced previously, but some of them have probably been there since the DAC had been remodeled or built or something out there. So not all of them are like stained, some of them are stained, but a lot of them are sagging, because they're so old, so. And, and ceiling tiles is a minimal expense, it's not, they're just like the, the two-by-two squares, so we're looking at that. So that's all I have. Does anybody else have any?
Well, Mr. Chair, just, if anyone gets a chance to drive through Lake Park today, first day of school, on just Main Street and then the, around, I'm just concerned about how, how our sidewalks are so incomplete at, at, at first day of school, and they've, it's been a mess all summer long. I'm going to go there and, and look to see what's, how good or bad it is, and I'll share pictures with you if, if I find any more, but it, they left, they left, completely left Lake Park, so they could go do another project, so, because there was a school that had the sidewalks. We're going to have to put more, more goals or more, more penalties if they don't finish projects like this. And, and now we're, now the people are worried about, what about Pumpkin Fest is coming up, and is that road going to be tore up? Can you tell me when constructions, I mean, Lake Park's been, been treated not well in this whole, by the, by contractors in this project, so I'm very concerned about in the next month, what's going to happen to Main Street there when they're having their annual. It's just going to be starting up, start rolling up unless they can finish it before in the next 20 days, so.
Mr. Chair, Jim walked in, do you have an update on that? And by the way, this isn't Jim's project, this is subcontract, so it's not, not his fault.
Yeah, I know I gave you an update last time, and the contractor did, or the subcontractor doing the concrete work arrived, they did some preliminary setup work Tuesday, and then they did three days of pouring. You know, it would have been nice if they could have got there Monday and had a whole week. They've completed some of the curb and gutter along First Street, which is the street one block east of Seven, and they finished some sidewalk areas, the one area in...
When we, when you say they finished a sidewalk area, you're talking about a 20-foot stretch?
Yeah, it wasn't...
They didn't finish anything?
No. But, yeah, we're, we're concerned too, and we're, we do have a completion date of September 24th. They still don't feel they can make that, so we're holding them to that, as long as they can keep their concrete guy here. I know he's got another job too, he hasn't started, he wants to leave for that, but we're using all the tools of the...
Their inefficiencies are not our problem.
I know, I know.
Jim, did you say they do think they could finish it by September 24th, or they don't think?
The concrete work and the sidewalk restoration, we want to get that all done. We want to get Front Street paved with at least one layer. At this point, if they can't complete all the, the paving work, we might just leave the old pavement there for, for Pumpkin Fest and, and clean it all up, and make sure everything else is all clean and ready to go, and then we could do the paving work afterwards, so we're not caught halfway in the middle of a paving job during Pumpkin Fest. But we're, we're working to hold them to their schedule, and, you know, make it as convenient and nice as possible for Pumpkin Fest out there.
Well, there's been no convenience or niceness there all summer.
No, there hasn't.
This is ridiculous. They, that's such a hodgepodge, piles of dirt everywhere, piles of gravel everywhere, cones everywhere, no rhyme or reason to anything. It's been the poorest project I've ever seen in this county.
Yep, you're welcome.
They also are going to be contacting you about crosswalks. What's the procedure through, through the city and, and county? There's, there's, people are starting to get organized, how bad it is. They're starting to get organized to start letter-writing campaign to you. I said, I, I encouraged it, so, I said, write, write letters, and tell them how, it doesn't do me any good to sit here if I'm just by myself, so.
No, we can put up temporary crosswalks, if there's areas that they want them, and then put in the permanent ones after the paving.
Did you see they have a sidewalk closed on the south side of the bridge? So between the bridge and the school, the sidewalk is closed. Where are they, where do you want the, it's, today's the first day of school, where are they going to walk? On the, on the road? Or they just walk around the signs? Get the signs off anyway, so they can cross the, cross the gravel.
Well, today, and they're, they're not walking in the mud, so.
Yeah, then it's mud too.
They left our job to go to where? To go to another school, because they had sidewalks for school. They had to get those finished before the school started. Well, they went to another school to finish sidewalks, and they, they're leaving ours closed.
Thanks for the update, Jim.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Do we have any other further reports or correspondence? All right, do we have any appointments? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any items in the consent agenda that we would like to remove, pull out? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So we have a motion by Erica, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Barry, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion Kerry's. So we're now to our county administrator. Should, Kerry, should we go right to the Becker County?
You can, if you'd like.
Yes. So if you would come up and please talk about the Becker County Food Pantry update, we're excited, so.
I'm glad you're saying it.
I just, I just love that facility. I just think it's awesome.
Thank you.
Place for people to feel welcome.
You guys need any, are you, I know I brought squash there a couple years ago, do you guys think that squash is a item that, that is used much? I, I...
Yes, it is.
Because that, that year, there, you had so much of it, or if people weren't taking it, that...
Well, there, sometimes we, it depends upon the crop, you know. There's some guys that bring a lot in, and, and we do eventually, it, it does go.
But I didn't leave it all, because you didn't want, they didn't want it.
Yeah, yeah. Because there are times where if it sits too long, well, you know, it, it...
Squash can take, it takes a long time.
Yeah, so we, we do take everything, though, that we can, and then sometimes we are overstocked on certain items, but relatively very seldom with the number of people we have, so. It, it's, we'll take everything, so.
It goes, it definitely goes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll get Jerry out there, and we can pick a pallet load of squash.
Yeah, that'd be great. So, my name's Liz, and I'm the manager slash director of the food pantry. Been there for about a year and a half almost now, and I really love it. I learn things every day. I have seen, I, I was never at the old building, but since I've started, I have seen this building grow and grow and grow, the need for it, especially this year. This year, we're seeing, well, I have, I have numbers all over the place, but this year so far, we've had 208 new households come to us. And we're hearing, because of the cuts to the SNAP program, so people are worried about not having food, food insecurities. We're also seeing some cuts, the farm-to-table program got cut as well. So for us, that was all summer long, we got produce drops from the North Country Food Bank, totes and totes and totes of apples and watermelons and all kinds of fruit and vegetables. Well, they cut that program, but North Country Food Bank thought it was so important that they actually funded it, but we had to pay freight, and we had to pay five cents a pound, which, you know, that was fine, but before, it was free to us. So we're seeing these changes. We're also seeing, I do the ordering, and on the order forms, you know, we have, we had choices of things that are free, things that are low cost, and things that are regular price. Well, the free things were mostly the proteins, the ground beef, chicken, pork, turkey. We haven't seen that. The last two orders, there's not been protein on that, which makes us, thankfully, our frees are stocked, right? But we're going to have to start going to buy that. So I was going to buy ground beef this past week, and I, we get it from Central Market, and it was $7 a pound. And I thought, I, I can't do that, $7 a pound. I can get chicken for less than that. So we're coming up on these things that we're not sure, and the food bank's not sure what's happening. They, that's what they tell us, they're not sure, they're trying, they're trying to get more grants for these proteins, but we don't know yet. So that's something that's been cut, and it's really affecting us, and the fact that we're, our numbers are growing. July was our busiest month ever. We had 2,181 people, and that made 653 households for the month.
Liz, I'm sorry, I have a question for you.
Sure.
So, can you order food from vendors, or do you have to go like...
I have reached out to Cisco.
Okay.
I have a few contacts there. They don't, it's not really, it's not really cost-effective actually.
No, but it would be cheaper than purchasing at Central Market.
It would be.
Yeah, but yeah, I know it's not really cost-effective.
Right, yeah. And then the ground beef from them is a special order, so I have to order it a month ahead, because we need it in one-pound packages, which, I can do that, but it's just, you know, we've been, and the meat manager at Central Market has been really trying to work with us, but there's a lot of weeks he cannot, he has to charge us.
I'm sure he has.
Yeah, the full price.
Yeah, go, I'm sure he didn't mean to...
No, that's okay. So, just in July, I started thinking like, okay, how much are we paying for food, right, from the food bank and the markets? Now, we do a lot of food rescue. Aldi's, Walmart, Central Market, they're great to us. They are very generous and really, really helpful for us. But in July, we gave away 51,000 pounds of food. We rescued almost 20,000, so that meant that we purchased 31,000 pounds of food. So calculating, it'll always change, because the food bank's prices are always changing, but in July, we paid 45 cents a pound for our food. And then if I added the meat to it, because I did buy meat from them, it was 63 cents per pound. So I spent around $20,000 on food just in July. So it's, it's just really growing, and we're, we're talking about cutting back the choices that people get, the amount of food they're getting, because we just, it's just growing. I don't know how we're going to sustain this, and especially not knowing the cuts that are coming.
Mr. Chair, Liz, when you say you rescue food, I think I know what that means. We explain that exactly what that means?
Sure, yeah. So three times a week, we have drivers that take our truck, and they go to Walmart and Aldi's, and they, Aldi's and Walmart, they put food away for us. So say it expired today, well, they take it and they freeze it for us. So then our drivers go and rescue it, so it doesn't get thrown away. Otherwise, they'd throw it away. And then we go every day to Central Market.
And there's milk that they give us that is close to the expiration date. We get it, because we know we can get rid of it. I mean, you know, because our numbers are high enough that we never have to go too long without that kind of stuff. So it has helped. There's days where it really has helped, you know, that we go through.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Has the elimination of the SNAP Ed program affected you guys, or how has it affected you? I guess maybe, I'm sure it's affected you, but how has it affected you?
It has. Well, the SNAP Ed, those people lost their jobs, right? So this whole SNAP program, that's where the seniors are getting insecure about their food, right? They think they're not going to get their food. And so that, they're coming to us now, and they want us to make that up, make that difference up. Or they were our clients, and they think we can give them more to make up for that.
Because the SNAP changes don't happen until 2027, right?
I'm not sure. I know that...
I thought it was 2027 was...
I know that the educators, they're, they lost their jobs and all.
The SNAP, yes, the SNAP Ed program was, was cut, but I think the SNAP changes to... The SNAP, yes, the SNAP Ed program was, was cut, but I think the SNAP changes to, to, you know, the people don't happen until...
But I, I think people are scared. They hear that. They hear that.
Can you, can you give me a little knowledge on the, like in July, you had 2,181 people and 653 families, so how do you calculate, I mean, when someone comes in for food is, I mean, if you have, how is, how are your numbers? If you have, you're allowed one per family, one, one, you're allowed there once a month, right?
Once a month.
So, is every child allowed once a month or every adult allowed once a month?
Yes, every household. So, when they...
It's a household.
Okay, so the, how do, how do you, what is the calculation of families then? I'm not, if you have 2,100 people, is that just, are they all then 653 families? So, you've...
Yes.
Then 653 units out, basically.
Right. We call families households.
So, the total number of people doesn't, there's that many people, but you're only, it's only 653 units of food that went out. Is that it?
Well, for families. So, within those families, there were 2,181 people in those families.
Does your, does what you send out change according to the size of the family? So, if you have a...
Oh, yeah.
Six-person family versus a two-person family.
That's kinda where I was going with it.
Oh, yes, yes.
We have it on our shelves, ranged from a family of one and two up to over 10.
Okay.
It isn't, yeah. And then in that range, you get different amounts of off the shelves.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was asking, because if it's the same unit for every family, then the number of people would really make a difference, but...
No, it, it goes according to how many's in the family.
Okay, thank you.
One thing that we, we talked about at Mohoobee at our last meeting is educating the public more on food preservation. Because, you know, food needs is becoming such, such an issue in our, the community assessment. So, do you provide any information on like canning, freezing, especially now this time of year when we have a lot of that produce?
No, not so much canning and freezing, if they ask about it, or if we have someone come in and, we've had just so many apples, so many apples. It's a banner year for apples, I hear. Oh, they're canning, they'll tell us. Well, we just give them, well, take more, you know. If you wanna can, go ahead and take that, but we don't really educate them.
Okay.
University of Minnesota, through extension, has, has a lot of courses.
But that would be maybe a spot you could tell them, refer them to maybe the university.
We do have a lot of referral papers up and a lot of that kind of stuff. And then the University of Minnesota, they were coming. They would visit us, like probably twice, twice a month and let people know and just...
That was through SNAP Ed, I suppose?
Yeah, sit and talk to the clients and...
Yeah, it was a SNAP Ed.
You know, one thing, too, is, is, I mean, I don't make them, but my wife makes refrigerator pickles and they're so easy to make and they, but you have to keep them refrigerated and they're so good.
Yep.
I mean, and pickles at the store are very expensive, too.
Yes. And we've been really, really thankful because the farmers, I mean, we get, we get cucumbers every day.
Yeah.
And we were for a while. We haven't done it for a little bit, but we were like giving, what am I trying to say, recipes.
Oh, yeah.
Here's, here's what you can use with this and this and this and this. We were doing that for a while, but the food preservation, you know, we've been working with Mohoobee over there. The public health has been coming in, because that was one of our thoughts of when we moved here, is to get the entities in to help us. And so, we've been moving on that project, too, to let people know what's available to them. And we're still trying to work with like the workforce center to get them in there to kind of promote where jobs are at, you know, just, and that's, our area is a lot, how would I say, safer area for a lot of these people to have that, that experience than it is in other areas. So, that's stuff we are working on. And we're also working on our budget, getting, we actually got a program and a lady that's working on it where we are identifying finer areas where our money's going. So, that'll give us a chance to look at, is that a necessary item or can we reduce it to keep our costs down? So, we are doing a lot of things internally with our budget and our board trying to figure out where can we cut, where can we, you know, without taking food away from the people. So, we're looking at that, how we can do that. And then we're also working on, we have a lady, Alyssa, that's on board with us and we're doing a lot with grants. We're trying to get as many grants as we can, no matter what. Some of them, we just only can buy stuff for the pantry. It isn't food-related, but at least we can get the equipment that we need and stuff like that, so.
If someone wants to donate food, but, or what's, what's, or maybe money, what's, what's better?
Money's better.
Money's better. That's what I thought, because then you can...
Money's better.
Money is better, but we'll take it.
No, I'm sure you will.
Yeah, we'll take, yeah.
Well, like with the cost that Liz said, you know, with money, we can get a better cost.
Yes.
Where, you know, that's a buck 29 or something at the store, we can get it cheaper.
Yeah.
So, we can get more with that, if we, with the money.
Does anybody have any questions for Dale or Liz?
I don't. Just thank you for...
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Appreciate you guys, all you, all that you guys do for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Becker County people, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you wanna touch base on Becker Bay? Maybe we can promote our own donations to the food pantry. You know, we've had, we have Becker Bay and we, we donate items, every employees and commissioners donate items and we auction that off internally and, and usually present a check. I think last year, our goal was 2,500 and we...
Two thousand, two thousand, twenty-five dollars. We did like 2,500, wasn't we?
So, we exceeded that, so I'm sure they can, they have volunteer hours, we can go out there and help.
And I think the month we do it, don't we get a match?
Yes.
Usually do it in March.
March, yeah.
They need a check by, I think, the middle of April.
All right.
All right, let's move on to our Fox Lake Association.
Carrie, are you done with your report?
No, she hasn't started her report.
Oh, okay, all right.
But we will go back to that. So, please, please Stephen state your name and your address for the record and then Kyle, you're coming.
I'm Stephen Corbin and I reside at 14447 West Lake Sally Drive. It's Lakeview Township. My family has had a property there since 1965, so I've got about 60 years of experience in the bucket that I will call on today a little bit. Our association, which has been around since the early 60s, the last several years has become quite concerned with the prospect of wake boats showing up possibly on Fox Lake. We've tracked what's going on nationally, in the state, in the county and even in our neighboring lakes. And we've tried to pay, we've had discussions about it at our meetings for the last several years. And recently, at our meeting in May, we decided that we need to step forward and do more than just have discussions. We became aware of a very comprehensive set of studies that have been conducted by the St. Anthony's Falls Labs at the University of Minnesota on wake boats and the air impact on the environment and the community, health of the lake, water quality and that, that type of thing. That evidence had not been available up until the last two or three years. And I have provided to the chairman a, a packet of materials. I hope it got back to you, about 35 pages long with a lot of different documentation. And our association decided that we would like to avail ourselves of the process available to us under Minnesota law for petitioning for a local surface water ordinance for Fox Lake. Why, why Fox Lake? We're an extremely small lake. We're only 143 acres. We're an extremely shallow lake. We don't really get to 20 feet deep. We have extensive sensitive areas on the lake of multiple acres that are basically kind of like almost watershed flora and fauna areas that are super shallow and they don't, they don't afford the ability to do anything. We're a pretty developed lake, you know, probably 99% developed. I don't think there's any more developable, developable lots unless somebody were to subdivide a parcel or do something like that. But the thing that really flipped our switch was the evidence from these studies from the labs down there at St. Anthony's Falls. Was so comprehensive, so explicit, so scientifically sound that it converted our subjective concerns into our feeling that we, we need to act. Now, there are no wake boats on Fox Lake at this time and quite frankly, we feel that that's the way it should be going forward. If you look at the array of lakes within Becker County that are above like 10 acres, the vast majority, 550 of them just are, are super small lakes. They're never gonna be appropriate for wake boating. And the ones that are, the larger lakes and the medium-sized lakes, there will be areas on those lakes that are appropriate for wake boating where wake boats are properly operated, can operate recreationally with other users and not do undue damage to the lake. But when the science shows that wake boats in wake mode cannot operate in shallower than 20-foot feet of water without doing damage. When the science shows that you need to have a wake boat 500 feet from shore and other boats and buoys and docks and all that to prevent damage to those areas, because the wake is what you're intentionally creating and the, the boats do it very successfully. If you've ever seen them operating. You'd have to have a wake boat 500 feet out from shore, so that when their wake got to 200 feet out, where you would be running a standard speedboat, ski boat, runabout, whatever they call them these days, to dissipate it down to that level. So, this, the science and its hundreds of pages of findings, I gave you about 15 pages of summary, way too much detail, way too much discussion about survey design, analysis of data and all that, which, by the way, I spent 40 years of my life at, in the, in public health field, public health research and all that. So, I'm not a layperson on that side of it. I've administered this kind of research. I know what quality research is and I know that's quality research. So, the bottom line is, we feel like a priori, our lake is just, will never be an appropriate place for a wake boat operation. So, we have, I've noted that this board has in the past created surface water ordinances in at least a couple of instances. One out at Straight Lake in 1993 where you put out an ordinance about the narrows there, having, not able to have boats go faster than 10 miles per hour. Then in 2004, I believe, you declared that there would be no motorboat activity of any type allowed on St. Clair Lake. Of course, we know it's regulations on, on Big and Little Detroit Lake, which is not your primary responsibility. Recent counties have also, there are hundreds and hundreds of local ordinances for water service regulation. But very specifically in germane to our situation, last year, Caribou Lake up at Cook County got a regulation, a surface water ordination, ordinance passed through local government and county government and then signed off on by the Department of Natural Resources at St. Paul. And that ordinance is now in place and that regulates areas of Caribou Lake where it's believed that wake surf boats can operate safely and areas where they cannot work safely and there is public signage and other kind of communication that's gone out. And the sheriff's department is ultimately responsible for dealing with any violations. Now, we have been to the Lakeview Township and at their August meeting, they voted unanimously to support our proposal for this local ordinance. And they advised us to take our, our next step, which we'd be bringing it for the Becker County Board of Commissioners to review our proposal. I'm not trying to deal with the universal issue of wake boats. I'm not opposed to wake boats. We're not opposed to wake boats. We think they need to operate in the proper places, just like all boats have the potential to damage our, our public waterways if used improperly. So, sure, we need courtesies, but in some ways, if we can take, take care of places like Fox Lake, it's just not appropriate on Fox Lake. Let's get that part of the work done. The sheriff is not gonna need to come out there and sit there with a pair of binoculars and see if a boat is violating the safe wake boating area. It's just not gonna be appropriate there. The only thing I would add is that at our annual meeting, there was unanimous vote to instruct our leadership of our association to go through the process. We then initiated a petition process at that meeting. We followed up with as much door-to-door stuff as we can do. You have a copy of the ordinance that we've come up with, which does follow on the one at Caribou Lake, except it's, it's simpler because we're not trying to regulate appropriate and inappropriate areas on Fox Lake. Without going into much more detail, I did have a personal experience with wake boats. Three summers ago, I was on a fishing trip out on Lake Pelican guided by your local guide here in Detroit Lakes. And it's a beautiful day. There's a light breeze. Pelican Lake's a beautiful big lake. And we're sitting in his boat like this and I'm having to put my rod down and hold on, because I'm frankly getting a little concerned about what's going on. Where in the hell is this coming from? Look out there. And I'm saying, out there is the middle of Pelican Lake. And the middle of Pelican Lake is a long way from the shoreline at Pelican Lake. And these waves were rolling in at quasi-white cap level and rocking the hell out of us to where we had to stop what we were doing. But they went past us and they hit the shore. And when they hit the shore, it was a bank shore. And that wave hit that shore and flew up in the air. I swear, I thought I was up by the Great Lakes or the Chesapeake Bay watching waves roll in. And I know that the natural wave patterns there are not to throw these waves way up 6, 8 feet in the air onto basically vegetated areas of a point. So, I'm gonna stop there. Hopefully, you'll have some questions or maybe I can provide some clarifications. Again, we think this is a reasoned approach. It's a preventive approach. It's a future-looking approach. It's not an after-the-fact approach. When people, people's properties are damaged, they're angry, they're hiring lawyers, we're getting in a combat of situation in the judicial system, we don't need that. But we have a process that we can, I think, move forward with this. So, with that, I would thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning and advocate on behalf of Fox Lake Association.
Carrie, I think you can add.
Yes, myself or Kyle. Basically, I had just, originally, this was gonna be an action item, but there's steps that need to be taken and I believe you've had some communication with...
Yeah, so in order to create a surface water ordinance is, is what this would be enforced by the sheriff, as this gentleman mentioned. It has to be approved by the DNR. I spoke with their boating law administrator who is Captain Adam Block last week. And he sent me a packet that is required to be filled out and returned to them for consideration and then they have 120 days to respond to that. If they were to deem that ordinance acceptable, then we would put it out for a public hearing and public notice and...
So, it goes to the DNR before it comes to us?
That was not my understanding. I understood that to be the last step in this process at Lake Caribou.
He sent me a packet that we're, that we're required to fill out. I, I don't believe we could move forward with adopting it without their approval.
That was, that was my understanding also.
Well, they, they won't approve it unless you approve it.
Mr. Chair.
And their letter that they would provide to your clerk, it would demonstrate that they acknowledged that both the local government and the county government have gone through the full process and have fully endorsed the establishment of the ordinance. By the way, the information for that packet is in your packet. I developed the spec sheet that's required of the DNR about my lake based on DNR sources and other information that we have. Now, have, you and I have not been in a discussion about this. But I'm trying to, I tried to follow the process that was used up at Cook County.
I think the, I think the process would be very similar, though, to when we amend our shoreline ordinance. We have to provide the DNR the proposed language and they gave us a letter of basically approval to move forward with that. I think this would be a, a similar process. From what I gathered from, from Adam was basically you, you fill out that packet of information, you provide that to them, then they respond to you within 120 days. This is what I got.
And then it comes to us and then goes back to them for final approval?
That's not my understanding. My understanding is when you...
I don't think we need to discuss this at all today because there's, there's, we don't have, this should not be an action item.
No, it's not an action item.
In any way, shape or form today. In any way, shape or form today. This is.
It was put on for discussion.
Information to give to us.
Correct.
For that, seeing the favor of moving forward or not. I, I do want to comment on the study that you said. I, I believe I read part of that study that said there should be no, no motor activity in 10 feet of water below. So take that study for what, what it is.
Not no motor activity. No, no.
That's what, that's what I read, no motor activity in 10 feet of water.
No, that's not correct.
So.
Obviously you have motor activity because people have to get from their docks.
Obvious.
Years have to get up.
Mr. Chair, I think we move on.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we, we, we have, we've got some advice from, that we will follow and then we will go from there.
I'll look at putting it back on the agenda was my intent.
And what advice can you provide to, that can I bring back to my association?
That we need to follow our advice of.
We want to, we want to, if I may, we basically want to clarify the process and I left this on the agenda today just so you had an opportunity to provide some background information, information only, and then we will ensure that we've got the process down and that it'll be up for consideration for this board again.
Before this group or?
Well, depending on, once we clarify the process.
Mr. Chair, does the process go through planning and zoning, public hearings?
Well, they don't create.
Kyle, you answer that.
I don't, it wouldn't necessarily have to. It's been done that way in the past. There was a, I, it was either no wake or a speed limit proposed on Blueberry Lake out in Commissioner Johnson's district. We could certainly hold the public hearing, but I'm, you could, you could hold it here. I don't necessarily think it has to go through us, but I'm more than willing to facilitate that process. I just, I'll need some direction from you if you want to proceed with, you know, filling out the packet and submitting it to the DNR.
The, the Blueberry Lake one that you referred to, I feel like that was, that was before I became commissioner.
Yeah, I think it was even before me, honestly.
Yeah. And I think that had something to do with wake boating also, but it wasn't, I don't remember what it was.
Basically, the county is just responsible to hold a public hearing and we could certainly do that and no issue.
So the county has to sponsor a public hearing because we had a public hearing at our association level. We notified all property owners and residents and they had the opportunity to come to a public meeting, but I didn't know that the county had.
Kerry's got a comment.
For any ordinance that the county would impose, we'd be obligated to.
This is public waters, so just the landowners on that lake aren't, aren't public.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as I'm looking at the rules here, it says we must have a public hearing by the local government, but we can have a discussion of where it would be appropriate to have that hearing.
Yep. All right, so we will find more information out and then we will follow the procedure and then, so you can bring that back to your association that once we know that, then we'll, we'll move forward.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle, could you stay there? Am I up?
Yep, you're up, yes.
The reason I asked you to stay there, Kyle, is because I'm just going to give an update to the board on the Blight properties in case there's anything additional that I'm missing.
Sure.
Okay, so we met as a team internally here as a multidisciplinary team, Sheriff's Department, Human Services, Planning and Zoning and Environmental Services to start some discussion with regards to Blight properties. And so we had some highlighted properties that we did have some further discussions on and some next steps. Really, the focus of this group was really to look at these individual properties and not just take a unified, you know, going forward and do everything the same because we really wanted to look at success and sustainability. So some of those properties, and there were supposed to be some additional meetings on some of those, and I don't know if you have any updates on that versus what I know.
I don't, I did speak with the sheriff again and we're going to make one more effort to go through those ones with individually.
Okay, just to have those initial discussions.
With those folks.
Okay. Okay, so that's the update that I have for you.
Mr. Chair, I, I did happen to be at a Detroit Lake City Council meeting and they were going through nuisance properties. I think it's the same procedure. I did tell Kyle about that and then if their procedure is correct and we have to follow the same one, that might be a model to follow.
Correct, and I, I think we, again, we were just really looking at what is the best approach here. You can, you know, modify ordinances and then you have to enforce those and then on the back end of that, how do you enforce those and how do you go about that and is that really the best way to go about addressing?
So we're still trying to figure that out?
Well, the ordinance, I think, will need to be updated, but again, addressing some of these properties and again, we have a lot of knowledge in-house with different departments, having worked with some of these individuals on these properties and have perhaps more of the details of what may lead to success.
But I think it, I think it's clear that this whole, I mean, that we're in favor of doing something. We have to update our policy to.
Absolutely.
To do it.
To curb some of these properties.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know, I don't know if I've ever given off the impression that I wasn't in favor of that. I don't know, have I?
I haven't.
Well, very.
I think so.
I don't know, but I, I am very much in favor of, of doing it and I'm being contacted continually about it and I'm watching it and it's very.
Well, have you stated, have you stated that other board members aren't in support of this to any individuals?
No.
You've never stated that I am not in favor, I mean.
I don't know that I have or not.
Well, and I think I need to clarify, it's not that, that process isn't going to happen. We're just doing that duly with some of the other things.
You're doing two things.
Correct.
I know there has, I, I know there has been discussion about this and I know there has been board, there has been comments made that people aren't ready to take people's property. I've heard that comment.
Well, there's no one taking, no one taking property.
Well, so if you, if you clean up a property and then put the charges of that on their taxes and then they can't, don't pay that, then you end up taking their property and I know we've discussed that here.
Yep, we have.
And, and, you know, I, I'm in favor of doing whatever we have to do to protect the neighbors of these properties. That's whatever it takes because some of them are so bad that.
So I think what was referenced prior to is this is a difficult, as Kerry is finding out, this is a difficult process.
Right.
It's a very difficult process.
It's not something you take lightly, but.
It's nothing that you take lightly, you're correct.
That's something that needs to be done because there are extreme cases where there has to take action.
Well, and I, and I think one of the things why we want to take a multi-department approach is because just us hiring somebody to go in there and clean it, even if they have the money to pay for it, isn't going to solve the problem many times, you know, that.
You'll do a repeat.
Whether there's mental health or there's some, something else, you know, going on. I think we need to look at it at, from a multi-department approach to make sure that we are setting these, these property owners up for success so we're not taking them.
Right.
Taking their property away and we're providing them every opportunity that they have and that we can provide to help them to get the property cleaned up. I'm with Richard. I hear since I became commissioner, several times a year of, of the one particular property in my area and, you know, it, it, one time I go by, there's garbage cleaned up and then it's worse the next time I go by. So I agree, we need to figure something out.
And some of the, I know, not some of them, that place specifically, we've been to multiple times. It's one of the sheriff's office.
And so is Steve.
Right, and we're kind of at, lack of a better term here, wits end, there's, you're almost like either we're going to clean it up or there's really nothing left to do. We had some of those discussions with Health and Human Services. Basically, unless there is an unhealthy living situation inside, the outside stuff really didn't pertain to them so much. They're not going to get involved with a bunch of cars and things like that. And I think that's where, going back to the discussion of making that decision is where it gets difficult because it's not that we haven't been in contact with these folks or been to their places or sent them letters. That's all occurred. It's just now you're at a kind of a standstill.
Nothing else to do.
Kind of.
Mr. Chair, Kyle, because the ordinance, our, our organizes, our ordinances don't, can't move us to the next level or why are we at a standstill?
Absolutely, it would just be, I don't, I don't think you're going to get a judge to probably put someone like this in jail for violating our ordinance. We've kind of been there before and it didn't really go anywhere. One specifically on Anderson Road that was really, really bad. I, I think in the past, the county has done it and one instance for sure, I know that they cleaned, they just cleaned it up because that's really your only, I mean.
And a setback on the taxes?
Yes. I think that's, I mean, you could, you could throw a fine at somebody, you know, in this position, but I don't.
Is there a, is there a time when the house becomes uninhabitable? Is that hard?
We wouldn't have something for that. That, that could be something that we could look at if.
I mean, I'm, I'm just.
To like condemn it, you mean?
Yeah, I know the city of Fargo condemned one and that was a, you know, that's a big deal. A gentleman was still living there and.
Right.
But he was having.
Well, I know specifically the property in my district, there is no livable, I mean, they were living in boats in the wintertime.
And I believe there was a fire in that home.
Mm-hmm, yeah, there's been two fires in that home and they're still living in it and nothing has been done.
Right. And I, I mean, I think, you know, when I talk to anybody, the neighbors or what have you, it's kind of how would I, I explain it, you know? It's not like we haven't tried. There's been, the MPCA has been to some of these places. I mean, the sheriff's office multiple times. You just, you're kind of up against that wall where.
You know.
What's next?
People have the right to live.
If, 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 if it's not negatively affecting the adjoining property owners, then it's not as significant to, for our, for my concern. You know, if it's, I'm just thinking of a case where it's probably not good living conditions, but they're not, they're not bothering anyone, they're not, and the neighbors, you know, they accept, accept it for, you know, things for the way they are and, and that, in that case, I mean, I, I think we're, I, I think the discussion should be too is like, we're not going out searching for these places. I mean, we're not, we're not giving, but if the neighbors, and this is a fine line where you go from nitpicking to serious concerns is, and that's the problem that we have with our offices. Is this just two neighbors fighting or is it, or is it, and I think it's obvious to us, but I mean.
Yeah, I think what we came up with was about maybe seven to 10 properties total that we actually get, you know, maybe active complaints on or where it's not just that few thing or it's not just a couple of cars, like it's, it's a lot of waste and other things. So I definitely get what you're saying because we don't want to go chasing, you know, a farmyard here or there. I mean, these ones are pretty significant.
And I don't have a problem either with people living that way, away from other people, but right next door to them and it's, some of these are so, there's so much garbage and they're so, they're blocking roads and.
And near waterways, you know, like mine, mine is right, the one in my district is right on, I think it's the Red Eye.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Well, the one on Brandy Lake is right on the lake and they've took in the commons area that belongs to everybody and filled it with cars and junk and.
If that's public property, then that all should be removed.
It should be.
I mean.
But they're also blocking the road and then.
I mean, if there's cars on public property that are, are not licensed, it's toll them.
Well, and that's what I'd like to see done with that out there.
Mr. Chair, Kerry, Kyle, what, what is the next step for this board or do we gotta, what do we do?
After, you know, having that meeting again, I mean, I think there's, they brought up a few points where there was an individual that was living inside a unhealthy situation and they were able to offer some grants and things like that to go in and help clean up inside. I just, I don't think there's a lot of grants to help clean up outside is kind of what I was gathering from them.
Probably, yeah.
Because it has to be, the health and everything has to be inside the home. So as I mentioned earlier and as I mentioned to Todd, I mean, we can make one more ditch effort. I'm hoping that, you know, by coming here, we, and I've been here before, having this open conversation, that the public will acknowledge that, you know, the board is moving in a direction to do something, no matter maybe what that is. So I guess we'll go back to them one more time and probably advise.
No, I, Mr. Chair, no, I, I mean, we've done that. We talk about different, different department heads are going, I mean, we've done that. We're, we're to, we're to the next step, right? Are we going to do that? You said there was.
I'd like to see something.
I mean, Rich has been taking calls for, so, and I'm probably the one that's the, you know, I, I start backing off when we, we take people's property because they won't clean it up. I, I, you know, I don't know what I think about that, putting kids out on the street. I mean, I'm not, I, I don't know if that could happen, but you know, I, I don't want to do those kind of things, but, but I'm ready to move to the next level too. I want to clean up the bladed property, so I, I don't know where everybody else is, but I don't know what to do next, what the next step is.
I can certainly bring, you know, we can, we can certainly get it to the, the court level. I don't think that's very difficult at all. I don't know if the total timeline would be normally like 90 days and that could be the next step. And if you don't get the answers there, then you could move to do something.
So, so if it goes to court level, then they, the court can mandate, you have 90 days to clean this up. If they don't do it, then we clean up and put it in and assess.
I mean, we just, I'd probably talk to Brian a little bit on what some of these timelines are, but I mean, we, we can certainly get it to that level. We can do that.
We're already.
I'd like to see.
I think we're there on some of them.
I think we really are.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, we're already expending county resources. The sheriff's been out there, Kyle's been, the mental, we've already been out there working, spending resources. It's ready to move to the next level.
Yeah.
I, I think, Kerry.
I would agree.
I don't know if we.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
We can, we can proceed with that.
Do you have direction?
Yep.
Do you have direction, Kerry?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tough situation.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, and, and that's really what I was trying to, I mean, not each of these properties has the same circumstances.
No.
There may be children, the inside may be unsanitary where it's not a livable situation or it's a nuisance outside to the neighbors. So that's what I was trying to impress upon the board. It's not every situation is exactly the same.
But I do, going back to the one that Richard was talking about, if, if the property does, is now starting to put their personal property on public land, like I think that's, should be something we wouldn't need a court order to address, right?
No, I don't think so, absolutely not. Or, or if they're blocking a township or county road, I, you would certainly have the means to tow those vehicles. The one in Brandy Lake, that, that is basically a common area that they're parking on. Brandy Lake is a common interest community, so all the area outside their homes is commonly owned and they're parking up there. But the road issue, you could certainly tow that vehicle, I wouldn't think.
So they're just overtaking the commons area?
Right.
It's not necessarily public, it's.
So I wonder if there's any rules with regards to the common area that, and.
But then is that still, still a civil, like?
Common areas are county owned, county owned and managed.
No, they're not, not, not Lakeview Township, they're not. The commons around the lake.
Are they in your name, Lakeview Township's name?
The township is responsible for them and the county released that responsibility to the township many years ago.
Released the.
Responsibility.
Responsibility. Who's the owner of that property?
They're public as far as I could tell.
And that is the county.
Well, no, the county released the.
Released the, the oversight to, to the township.
Correct.
The underlying ownership, I believe, is county because we record them. These are, they're, they're all over the county. They're recorded at the recorder's office as public property and I believe they're, that the county is the manager of those properties. I mean, I know there's Leaf Lake and Upper Cormorant and the neighbors tried to buy the one on Upper Cormorant and then that got, because that was a lake, that was a lake access in the wintertime for people to drive across, so.
But maybe with, with those properties.
The county is the one that manages those.
If we could give them a notice of you have.
Yeah, what I'm getting to is this is county public, this is county managed or in this case township managing. And we have the authority to clean this property up and allow no overnight parking and no, no, nothing left on site. And if something is there, we'll, we'll confiscate it. I don't think we need any ordinance. I mean, that, that's our property, it's our managed property.
If we could do that, I'd like to see that.
Well, this one is different, I just pulled it out.
Yeah, I think it is. Yeah, I think it is.
There is some that would be, you know, if it's public property, I think that would be easy, but this is known as an Outlet A and in the plaque, Outlet A is dedicated to the respective lot owners of Brandy Lake Estates for their use and benefits. And the use and benefit of their respective heirs, successors or assigns, so I don't.
So that one is.
Yeah, I think they own that, Kerry.
Specifically says, and not to the public at large.
Yeah.
So that case.
But not the public at large, but who's, who's managing that, do they have a lake association that manages that?
Well, I think it would be like an HOA.
I mean, if they, if they have one, if they form one, they can, they can remove the stuff themselves.
So that would be something that you could tell them, Richard, when they call, like, they need to maybe develop a HOA to govern.
To manage that. It's for that development.
Right.
Yeah, they, so if you want to fish that, you can't, I can't get on there and fish because I, according to them, then that, that's what it's always, I've been understanding.
Well, and I would agree with that.
That, that's a private access just for.
Sounds like according to what you read.
Community.
But that was the intent of most of those. For access for, I, I imagine there's about 100 legal experts that would give you 100 different opinions on this.
Maybe even 101.
Yeah.
All right, Kerry, do you?
All right, thank you, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Um, I'll just try to run through the rest of my updates here, um, we had a meeting, or there was a meeting with the, with the state regarding the 4E funding for the attorneys, I think I maybe talked about this before, and the estimate of our reimbursement, this is for our reimbursements for our retainers that we pay for, parent attorneys and CHIPS cases. What they're estimating is about $11,000 a year and they were estimating, I think roughly four hours of administrative time per month, so really need to take a look at whether or not it's cost effective to move forward with that reimbursement. There was a safesture walkthrough with our building, we really, there hadn't been one since 2023 and so there was many suggestions made, they do this on our behalf and point out deficiencies in all of our buildings, so several of those reports on buildings were provided and we are working on fixes for several of those and I've had some meetings with Brent, Facilities Manager, and then a few of the respective department heads as well, really defining and ensuring that people are aware of what needs to happen and who is going to be responsible for the modifications. There was briefly some discussion with regards to the UKG system and that's been reviewed through courthouse a few different times and we've been working on that for a few months now, really steadily having some meetings with UKG and really just trying to get some fixes that we were looking for and a functioning HRI, H, H R I S system really from, with the goal has been since 2022 to have a functioning system from hire to retire and all the way through payroll. There's been a lot of effort and time put into this and I'll come up with some final figures and a formal recommendation for the next meeting. Safety Committee, we already talked briefly about the recommendation from the Safety Committee to purchase and upgrade AED machines, tend through the buildings, and that was really recommended, recommended with regards to response time, so we were able to identify buildings that perhaps don't have them, that are too far from the next building, specifically out in Environmental Campus. And so I will put together some final figures and bring that through finance the next board meeting as well. Probably piggybacked with that, we've also talked about the need in the county and apparently in the past, we did have a CPR trainer, AED trainer, but that has, since we don't have a dedicated safety person, that really has, we've outsourced that, which is quite costly. So an employee in Human Services has agreed to become a trainer for the county and they do have funding in their training dollars, so that will begin this fall and then we'll probably need to look for a second employee that will agree to perhaps be trained as well, because I don't know that that individual will be able to take on all of those duties through the county, you know, with, with their other assigned county duties as well. There was an additional opioid settlement in Minnesota that I did get paperwork right before I left on vacation, that I did sign the paperwork, I'm not, I haven't heard yet an actual dollar amount, but that, I just wanted to share that that's also coming through. Lastly, I know this came up just briefly and I know we've talked about work session and budgetary questions, you know, some of, that we've talked about different things that perhaps we want to do on these work sessions and I can certainly schedule that, but I'm just really looking for direction from this board of what you want to do. I've heard after we set the preliminary levy, I've heard before, so I'm a little bit unclear what the board wishes are and I certainly will schedule what you would like or what you think would be helpful.
My, my, I think we need one before we do our final levy, for sure.
Yeah, as far as budgeting.
Budgeting, yeah.
I don't think we need one before.
I don't think we need one before the preliminary, but we need one before the final.
Okay. I've heard both, so.
Mr. Chair, I, I think we need several and several, several different topics and I suggest, the only suggest that I have is not to do them after this meeting, I know Erica doesn't want, because he wants to spend the time here, but I, these meetings go too long and I think we need a break between them, I don't care if they're the same day, but not immediately after, that's my only suggestion.
Your work sessions though, specific to the budget?
Well, any of them.
Is that what you're wondering though, is specific?
I'm, I'm specifically to the budget, but it, it links back to some of the things that have been talked about, you know, funding for recreation, I think we need to have some discussion about staffing out at the Murph and backup for the ICWIC crew leader and whether or not we're going to fund something or how, there's been several topics that intertwine with our budget.
Sure.
This bladed property might be, could possibly be work session.
Well, that'll be a work session when it comes for us for ordinance review and how we, you know, that will be, that's, that's inevitable, that that's going to be a work session and it will be, because there's a lot of, you know, any of these ordinance things will be work sessions, but I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with, I mean, our next lev, our preliminary levy set next, next meeting, so, but I, I think we have to dive in.
Yeah.
A little, we have to dive in deeper, I mean, it's, I mean, I look at the sheriff's budget and that, that thing has grown so much in the last 15 years, I, I don't know where, I don't know why that, that has increased so much more than every other department, why that, this, even this year. So, I mean, I think we need to dig, go a little deeper and, and maybe set some goals on reducing that, on the budget for each, each department, especially those that have a higher percentage increase.
Mr. Chair, Kerry, do you have direction?
I'm still unclear if you want it prior to the preliminary or.
I, I'm going to say after the preliminary.
After, okay.
Is that good with everybody else?
It's either, either one.
Yeah, it works for me.
I, we can do it before too, but it, we're gonna, we, we have our preliminary, we're okay and then we can, we, but we need to do something, we need that.
We can always lower it.
We can always lower it.
That, that's correct, historically, we have.
That's why I'm fine with after.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's, that's fine, I'm just saying historically this board has really worked on the preliminary levy and it's stayed the same for the final.
Well, let's just agree to this, instead of having one prior to the preliminary, we will work on seeing what that is.
Reduction and setting that, okay.
And we will work on lowering it if, if possible, after the preliminary.
Yep.
Okay.
And if we want to do it on a day that is not a, a board meeting day, the Tuesdays of non-board, board meeting days typically work for me, just.
At the same time that we normally would have a board meeting, like 8:15, 8:30, okay.
You know, and, and looking at later, we can maybe find some more information on next year's, I mean, we'll, we'll have more information on some of the reductions that are, from state and federal spendings to, or fundings and grant, you know, loss of grant revenues and.
Well, I think, I think we're probably going to for sure, once the federal budget is set, you know.
Have some discussions.
You know, we're going to know more about how that's going to affect the counties, because there's potential for it to have some pretty big impact on us, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks, Kerry.
All right, thanks, Chair.
Mr. Chair, Kerry, there are a couple things outstanding from last, we were going to get Liz Lynch possibly in here from the library?
Did she come, has she contacted you?
No.
We were going to have some fair board numbers, is that still to come here in September?
I don't know, September, we have our fair board meeting the end of September.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
The last Monday.
Okay, all right, we were, we all got that email from Fishbok, were we going to reply, we thought replying as a group.
Thank you, I do have an update on that, I did respond to that and they did give some preliminary dates to do a meeting, I sent another question back because I wanted to clarify whether or not it was the, I can't think of the term, her, she herself or her associate?
Do you want me to give you the answer?
Yeah.
I think we know the answer.
Okay, all right, I, I was hoping so, I, I, yes, thank you for bringing that, so they did give some potential dates where they could come on site and I can certainly share that with the board and see if it works for whomever. But knowing, knowing what I know today, then, you know, you can make the decision whether or not you want to use that time to speak to.
You know, one thing that would be possible, if we could, we could, well, I think, you know, like Clay County, I think they do a lot of things, but I, I was thinking regionally, we could get together with, you know, a few different counties and, and county boards and, and reach out to our, Nash, or, you know, Ms. Fishbok and, I mean, if we could get Clay out or, I mean, if we could get a bunch, then maybe she would attend.
Then she might attend, yeah, that's true.
Okay.
But I mean, I, I just thought, but if she, I mean, their schedules are just so crazy.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I had.
Especially with the, the.
Yeah, I mean, we, we certainly, they're not going to come fly over a meeting for, but I'm sure this is just the local, you know, the local communicator or liaison for local boards.
I couldn't think of the right word, yes.
But, so I mean, I think that's fair.
So I can certainly move forward with scheduling that if, if it's informal and we can certainly start there.
Would that be that representative at one of our board meetings, would that be a standalone, because we'd have to notice it, right?
Well, I think we would notice it no matter what, but I think it would probably be better and they gave some potential dates and they didn't necessarily line up with our board meeting, so it would be outside of the board meeting.
It would be, I, I think you would be outside the board meeting and maybe we could, you know, show, show them Becker County a little bit, I mean, you know, traveling, you know.
Take one of those tours.
Yeah, I mean, go to Dunlop's and say, you know, go to the beach here, go to, I mean.
Okay.
The highway.
Yep. So again, they gave some potential dates to me and I can certainly look to see what maybe would fit most schedules and then get it scheduled.
Yep, that works.
And then the last thing that I, sorry, I thought it was done, but I forgot, just as a reminder, the AMC Annual Conference registration is opening, that's in December.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, I plan on going.
I'll go too.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
I'll go.
Everybody's going.
I prepped him from last year, he said he's going this year, so.
Mr. Chair, Kerry, the last thing, that leading with light thing, there were three of us that were interested.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead.
So the leading with light thing we talked about last week, there were three of us interested, it is, it's 500 bucks, I don't know if we all three need to go, but maybe one of us can go and report back or it's eight weeks of.
Yeah, I was going to look at the, did we get the dates?
We didn't get the dates, I think they wanted to get the people together.
They're trying to get the counts and then decide, your group would decide.
Without knowing the dates, I'm going to say no.
Yeah, me, me also, without knowing the dates, I.
But Phil, fill the bill, you're up.
I'd like to say no, but I would like to know the dates, but.
We also have the conference coming up in September for.
Yes, next week.
Alexandria.
So I don't know, what, what is your thoughts, Phil?
Well, I, I just, I didn't want to miss the opportunity, but I didn't think we should send three people to it and spend 1,500 bucks.
But can we, can we, can we both, can we have two people and do one spot?
No, it's per individual, it's a.
Like share a spot, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, share a spot, so that we.
No, it's.
That we both would.
Well, there's homework in between, so they need to be sharing homework.
Then I'm definitely out.
Definitely.
Homework.
So, do you want me to pursue it? Does this board want me to pursue that then and see what?
I think that would be good, Phil, for you.
I'll pursue it, I'm kind of interested in it and see what it's about, so.
Yeah, and I, I may also, I'll take a look and see if I can squeeze that in as well, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, now that's all, all I have.
All right, so we will move on to Human Resources, is Tiara?
Oh, sorry, that, I'm, Tiara's out on an emergency leave, she'll be out for a period of time, so I'm going to cover her items for her.
Okay.
So the first item that she has is 1B, this is a recommendation for, it comes through the Benefits Committee for the medical insurance, what the, we went out for, the Benefits Committee through our broker went out initially, let me back up. Medica, our current provider, when we got the rate increase, it was above 18%, we were anticipating even higher, so the decision of the Benefits Committee was to go out for an RFP to see if we could get better rates, because 18% is quite a hike. And so the recommendation coming from the Benefits Committee, and there was quite a bit of discussion, was to go with Minnesota Blue Cross Blue Shield and that rate increases at 8.5%. So I would certainly recommend approval of 1B.
And, and the, the, so what's, can you just explain what the difference is between, just sort of, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield and?
Minnesota Blue Cross Blue Shield comparable plans, probably the highlighted difference is, if you recall, on Medica, the primary clinic on the high deductible plan was linked to Essentia Clinic. Now where this one, their primary clinic would be Sanford, that's probably the highlight, and did I miss something, Barry?
I think, I think that's, that's accurate, so now if you want the cheapest plan, you have to, you'll have to, if you were on the cheapest plan, you want to stay on the cheapest plan, you'd have to switch over to Sanford. But the kicker on this though, is that Blue Cross Blue Shield has the Aware.
Aware Network.
Package, so their cheapest package before is only slightly lower than the Aware package that Blue Cross Blue Shield has, so there's only, there's only the very few and the savings would be minimum to stay. So what, what this switch is really good for potentially is family coverage. The families could see significant savings, significant savings on, with this, with this plan now.
With the premiums that they pay, yeah.
So there was people there that were taking, that they would actually experience, they have, they will pay more, but the one case was $15 a month, that's the lowest, you know, $15 a month, and they said, I, we, this minimal expense for us is saving on the other end. So the, there was like a few examples of this would cost more for those that wanted to stay at Essentia, but the bottom part was huge savings, huge savings, I mean, was it 250 a month for family in, in the one case?
I thought it was higher than that.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's significant, so there will be some people that will, it will cost more if they want to stay with Essentia, because they'll have to go to the Aware Care.
Yep, it's up here, yeah, she, she did include that chart.
Oh, I got my pointer, finally, I can use my pointer, oh, all right, oh, all right, see, these are the, these are the ones. This isn't the sheet I was looking for, um.
It's a good deal.
Yes, I, this isn't the one.
It's Essentia and the passport.
Oh, the Blue Cross Blue Shield.
See, these are savings, but, but there's another one that shows where it would cost, it would cost people to switch. This isn't the same sheet that I had, maybe I.
Well, here's this one, 2026 was 3,400, this one was 2,951.
I thought it was closer to 500.
Cost comparison, all Blue Cross Blue Shield Aware Plans, so could you put, put this one up? Do you have this?
No, that one's. That is the one that we.
This is the one. This is the one that shows the difference between Medica and Blue Cross, so this is, this is the ones where they will pay more money, so this would be a worse, worse deal, so this, I don't know if I can.
But it's not a lot.
No, and if, and if you take the highest priced one, which is family, that's, it would increase 193 a month, but when you do the math and you figure out, that's not the plan you'd take then, even if you wanted to stay, you would take with a different plan, so this is the sheet I was.
Kerry, do we know what the savings is going, you know, when we initially had looked at it, we were looking at a 8, 20% increase?
Are you asking budget, what, but when I, when I set the budget, I was preparing for the worst case scenario, so in the budget currently, we have not modified that, I did a 25% increase.
Yep, so that, so.
So dollar wise. This might be maybe a, at most half a percent difference in the levy, is that kind of what we're thinking, somewhere in there, where there's, there's so many.
Depending how much you drop down and, yes.
There are so many different variables on that, it won't.
There was.
We won't know exactly till everyone.
But it'll be a cost savings for sure.
It'll be a cost savings.
From the original budget proposal, yes.
Yes, yes, and I, I think the other thing that's worth mentioning on the insurance is that if you can bring family coverage more in, more affordable to people, you know, what drives our cost up is our usage. And so when you have high claims, it drives the usage up and then they have to recover insurance companies for what they're paying out, so if you can bring in a more affordable family coverage for employees and they take that out, then potentially the, what, the payback on that is that you have more healthy kids and, and healthier people on the plans and that maybe don't use insurance or don't, you know, other than their yearly appointments, well, child and some of those kinds of things, so that is the hope, so.
Okay, that, that answered my question, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew, so do we have a motion to approve 1B?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Erica, second by Barry, do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
So the next item is Resolution 1C, this is a career letter that was discussed. So the next item is Resolution 1C, this is a career letter that was discussed through committee in the assessors office, this is relatively a new opportunity for an internal employee who did some additional training, and it was recommended by DDA that would this particular ladder be implemented for Assessment Tech 2.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Barry to approve 1C, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Phil, any more discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The third item is the PFMLA, oh, not A, PM, PFML policy, let me get my words done right here, and this is a, a policy with regards to, as you all recall, in 2026, in January, we'll have the paid family medical leave that will be going into effect, and this is a policy that was reviewed again in courthouse, I don't recall, I guess I don't know if it went through finance or not, but my recommendation would be for approval.
So basically, this is just the.
This is just the policy we're.
Policy that we have changed and put in, yeah.
So move.
All right, so we have a motion by Erica to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Barry, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion carries.
Then the last item, these are addendums that are in your packet, these are union contract addendums with regards to the split cost for the PFMLA, the, the contribution so that it continues to be a 50-50 split.
Can we move all of them?
I was just going to, I, I would think you could probably move.
Make a motion to approve the LES Supervisors, LES, Essentia Administrators, Human Services Supervisor, LES, Deputies, LES, Dispatchers and Jailers, approval of the addendum.
So do we have a motion by Barry, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Erica, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Do we just have, what, two teams, there's an ASME?
I believe Tiara had said that, yes, we have two outstanding still, that she was waiting for those to come back and then probably come before you next.
Teamsters, we have actually three, courthouse, human services, and has.
Yeah, the two teams.
Oh, the two teams, yeah, it would be three, yes.
All right, so let's move on to Judy for information and technology.
Carrie, what's our agenda like for next meeting, is it full?
Next meeting?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, Peggy would have a folder.
I was, what?
Phil won't be here.
Oh, I was, I was going to buy lunch, that's a.
Oh, yeah.
I wanted to go out and buy lunch.
We have a preliminary levy.
That's a stab in the back.
Okay, well, I'll touch base, I, I mean, I think I'd like to get a lunch bunch.
We do have potentially the retaining wall.
Oh, that.
Ordinance, but I wonder if we want to do that without Phil being here, would be my only thought, but.
Good morning.
Morning, Judy.
Please go ahead. I have, bringing before you guys, I would like to re, re, I guess it would be purchase, no, uh.
Renew?
Renew, thank you, renew the VPN software that we use for the multi-factor authentication, we started doing this in 2023, we added to it in 2024, and this is to, to, would be for the next two years, the cost to us is $80,573.61, um, do you have any questions on it?
No questions, other than just it's very important for us to have.
I would think so, yes, otherwise I wouldn't bring it forward.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Oh, let's have a motion, I'll move.
I'm already halfway up the stairs by the time you get to that, sorry.
You'll make a motion to approve the $80,573.61.
For two years.
For two years.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Barry and a second by Erica, do we have any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, Judy, where does that 80,000 come from, was that in budget, did we expect this?
Yep, that was in budget for the IT budget, it was originally paid for by CARES, whatever we called that money at the time, Special General, and then, knowing it was coming this year, I budgeted for it the previous year.
And we do have, so this was budgeted for this year, all 80,000, it's a two-year deal, so she, she will have room, and, and she did say she has lots of other areas to spend it, so.
Yes, I do.
You didn't say that.
So it won't, won't save us budgetary wise because she is, and I, and unfortunately in today's world, the, the IT budget is growing exponentially because of the threats that are continually out there and, and changing, and it's, everything's getting more expensive.
And we, and we do save 10% by paying the two years.
Yes, yes we do.
Better, better than not getting lunch.
But we, we're, you know, I do have to say one thing is good about Becker County, if we did crash and burn, we still, Mary still is all doing things by paper and pencil, so we will have all the documents.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
Mary, I swear, we're coming back to you.
Steve.
We're full circle, we're going to come back to paper and pencil.
We have land use and environmental services.
Morning. Mary will be instructing all these young kids coming on.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
Members, Barry, Peggy, I've got three items to present to the board today, the first one is an acceptance of a donation of $1,500 from the Disabled American Veterans Chapter 31, to, they, they gave a donation that will go towards the purchase of a new pick.
Mr. Chair, move to approve Resolution 9-251A.
All right, so we have a motion by Phil to approve 1A, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Barry.
Are there, did they ever request for access of something, you know?
I haven't seen that yet, I've heard, I've heard they were talking about it, but I haven't seen anything.
But there's no conditions on this?
No.
Yeah, just, just so we're clear, that's, it's from the Disabled American Veterans Chapter 31, so, thank you, thank you to them, all right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries.
The second item came up in Environmental Services Committee, Commissioner Hanson would like to initiate a new.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I can talk about this a little bit, I just, you know, we talk about environmental stuff and I, I just thought, you know, what can we do, this is something, you know, this is just a template here, but I wanted to know if the board was going to be in, in, in favor of this before I did any work or not, any more work or not, and I directed Steve to do a little bit on it, but what would it cost to give our taxpayers some amnesty for a week or something to get rid of some of this stuff, so it doesn't end up in our ditches? So we just kind of came up with this electronics recycling, I was considering, we're still throwing it out there to do it for the first five days of October, you know, down the road, if it works well, I mean, there will be some configuring with this, but maybe we do mattresses next year, maybe we do tires one month, probably won't do anything during the summer, because we're, we're just super busy, but it's just a way to reach out, it, it's, there's several reasons, number one, clean up our county a little bit, number two, you know, you feel like you're getting something for your taxes, you get a free drop off for a few days, yeah, there might be some other people.
So would the free electronic drop off be only Becker County residents and only, you have a limit of two per?
We would, we would work, we would work on that, yep, mattresses would probably be a mattress and a box spring if we did that.
Is there, what is, is there a charge for phone, like if you have an old phone, is that a charge?
I don't believe so, not for phones, but it, just real small screens and the big ones, there's, there's a different charge for each one, what's happened in the electronics recycling world in the last few years is, I'm not sure if it's due to legislation or just demand for it, but the, we're actually, some loads that we ship out, we don't get a bill or might get a rebate a little bit, next load, there might be some cost associated, really it's the, the cost of the screens and getting rid of those.
And the batteries, isn't there, like cell phones, I'm thinking of the batteries, is that where there's?
We don't really have a cost with that either, I mean.
No, but is that where there's a concern that they are recycled or brought versus thrown in the dumpster?
So in, in committee discussion, there was a, the ask was about what would it cost us, basically our cost right now is to ship out these, a load of e-waste and then we have to pay for Gaylords and, and pallets, but, you know, it's between, let's say, $1,000 and $1,500 per semi-load that we ship out, this wouldn't be a big cost for us if we had a temporary abatement of, of the tip fee for a short period of time.
So the, how was the battery, the battery program, the free drop off battery program, is that doing?
That's doing very well.
Is, I mean, do you want the little batteries, the, you know, the triple A, the double As, is that?
No, we really don't, I mean, they, they can, we could recycle them, but it costs us.
So when you get those, you just throw them in the garbage?
We do, yes, it's cheaper to put them in the waste than it is to pay somebody to recycle them, those.
But the rechargeable ones?
Rechargeable ones, we do, we ship those out, those cannot go into the garbage.
How about the, I mean, could we just increase the size of those for phones and to increase, you know, to have, any, anything with a lithium battery can go in here, a rechargeable lithium battery?
I never thought about that, but we could, or you'd be more changing.
Or appropriate place for those smaller units, there's a lot of smaller ones that, that have, but I, I'm, I'm fine and that this will, it will encourage usage, it will encourage more recycling and.
Yep, and, and we talked about it, finance a little bit, and we kind of, we kind of agreed that it should be just for Becker County citizens and there should be, should be a cap.
Citizens or property owners?
Or pro.
There's a big difference.
Yeah, there's.
It's, it's going to be hard to police that.
Well, you're not going to unless you find someone abusing, that you think is abused.
Well, and that's why I wanted to limit the days, I don't care if it, if, we don't have to give a month's notice, let's, I mean, consider this like a flash sale, I mean, that's the kind of idea I was going on, get rid of some stuff quickly, I mean, we're talking about a less than 8% tax increase for, I mean, this is, this is giving our taxpayers something, although be it small, something, I mean, you feel like you're getting something, I guess, a freebie, this would be monitors, this would be laptops, this would be printers, you know, we'd, we'd list the things out, the, the e-waste things that we would take.
A printer's e-waste?
They're considered part of an e-waste.
So.
Right now, we don't charge for it, just.
I think, I think, I think if we.
Monitors, we would.
I think we can say like, we can say Becker County taxpayers, we're not going to maybe enforce it well, but we can, we can kind of control that by the amount that you can bring in, like you can bring in two of these, one of these and two, whatever.
Monitors, I think would be the thing, big thing, wouldn't it, Steve, the monitors would be the thing that we'd.
Like, I think one thing that we, we talked about at finance is like you have large entities that have.
Yes.
Rooms and rooms of monitors, like are we going to let them bring in a truckload of monitors, that, that was.
Yeah, that was the business thing, yeah.
Why should we limit it or not?
Yeah.
If they had a truckload, they'd probably be taking it someplace themselves, but that's something we have to talk about as limits, probably.
And TVs too, didn't you say, Steve?
That's correct.
Televisions.
So if we did this for a limited time only, the first five days, the first is a, is a Wednesday, the fifth is a Sunday, we're not open on Sunday, so it'd be three days plus Saturday, half a day, so I, my goal in this is to try to make it for a limited time, make it important, get the word out there, but not extend it forever, on day, on day six of October, it goes back to regular price.
Where would you, where would the drop sites be?
The drop site would be the transfer station, just, so it's already staffed.
Right.
About the Osage one?
Yep, the Osage one, yep.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is, you know, for me, I have one screen, does it pay or is it reasonable to, for me to drive up 20 miles and drop off one screen for free and then drive home, you're talking, you know, 35 miles, I've spent two, two gallons of gas, you know, I mean.
You got Wednesday, Thursday and Friday to figure that out.
You know, but you know what I'm saying?
You might be going to DL one day.
You know, you want to encourage recycling, but.
We're not picking up.
No, no, I'm just saying, would it be better?
To have sites.
Be better to give a, you know, a ticket, say, here's a free ticket for the next time you come in, I, I don't know, I just, I just hate seeing people drive a specific trip for recycling because you are losing all the things that you, good you're doing if you're driving a specific trip and wasting that fuel, but something, you guys just think about it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, maybe down the road, I mean, I, I mean, this is just, this is a crap shoot, we're going to see what happens, see what kind of result we get, and then go through the winter, see if there's ways we can improve it with a different commodity, that was my thought.
We could get a little, like a booklet with all the coupons and the.
Kind of like the Laker cards?
Yeah.
When we did this in Lakeview Township, what people did, they would, they would stockpile the whole year because they knew it was in July, I don't.
That makes sense though.
Well, to them it does, yeah, absolutely.
As a consumer, that makes sense, if I know that there's going to be a week off, drop off for electronics, I can save them for six months, but if you're just going to flash it and say, hey, we're going to take free, a computer screen free this week, it was brought there last week, what, what good does that do me?
Okay, you know, those are some lessons we'll, we'll have to learn through this process, like I said, maybe in the spring we do mattress in a box spring.
I mean, I think you.
We'll try, yeah.
But. It's supportive and we got, there's lots of ifs, buts and cherries and nuts.
So, okay, Mr. Chair, I would, I would make, I would move to suspend.
Well, don't we want to set it all first, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but don't we want to set the dates and, and figure all that out before we make a?
Well, we did.
Mr. Chair, can we just authorize the administrator to?
Yes.
Move forward with this program and, and suspend the rules as?
Because we've already got a price sheet, so we would have to suspend the rules for those first five days for.
But I think we just authorize it for a one-week suspension at, I think that would be appropriate, if you've got.
We'll come up with a proper terminology.
You have schematics that you, lots of discussions that, or discussions that you'll have to work through, but we authorize it, we authorize this program and suspensions of rules and prices for this program for this.
For these five days.
For this current year.
Well, we don't want to go for the full year, we only want to go for the time slot that we.
No, I'm saying you have the, to work within that year, to work within this.
So if you decide you don't want to do it the first week in October, you have the flexibility to move it to.
This is an ongoing, this ends at the end of 25, you have one week to figure out what you want to do and.
Okay.
Because I do, I do think that we want to make sure that we have it all in place, like what can be dropped off, the times and all that, so we can maybe provide information to Nate to run an article in the newspaper.
Absolutely, absolutely, we'll do that.
So I think the first week of October might be.
Let's just, let's just say.
No, we're doing it the first week of October, November's going to get too cold, we're going to push to get it, we're going to get it.
Well, you could do it the second week of October.
Well, but here's.
Mr. Chair, let's, let's let the administration and the committee decide, because this is going to be a work in progress.
It will.
A lot of things will probably change before, so I'll make a motion to authorize the Environmental Committee to have, to suspend the, the price fees for a one-week period for electronics drop off program, dates to be set by the, signed off by the administrator.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, I'd just like to add one thing to the motion, can we, but it has to be done before the end of this fiscal year, this[1627.91] calendar year.
In, for the calendar, for the one week, in the calendar year 25.
Is that good? I know what's going to happen, all right, so we have a motion and a second, do we have any more discussion?
I just want to, I want to thank you guys, I mean, we sit in these committee meetings, we come up with some ideas, I don't know how it's going to be voted out, so I don't want to put all the work into it and, and have it shot down, so, I mean, we've got some basics here, so thanks for doing that, Steve, I know it's going to be some extra work on your lap, but I want to help with this, I want to make this work, I want this to happen, I want this to be successful, so thank you for letting me vent and, thank you for.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.